Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting in West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are present here for our meeting. As we traditionally do, we have an opening ceremony and I have invited, I believe it's Nancy? Oh, yeah, there she is. Okay. We're going to have a little bit different. And so we've invited her to come and make some remarks and presentation on.
Thank you, Mayor. Nancy Day Parks in Recreation. So I'll give you a brief outline of what to expect this week at West Fest. We're thrilled. We think that it's going to be an amazing event this year. It will begin tomorrow, Thursday. So the vendor schedule is Thursday and Friday from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., Saturday 11:00 to 11:00 p.m. And the carnival schedule is Thursday from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., Friday from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m., Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday from 12:00 noon to 11:00 p.m. As for the carnival, so that you are aware, on Thursday, as they typically do, they have a buddy day where it's buy one, get one free for the All Ride Pass access, which is $35. Or people can buy tokens for a dollar apiece. And the rides are typically three to six tokens each for that. There's a full list of entertainment from bands and dance groups as always, a lot of food vendors and crafters and things there. But I would like to give you just a brief event highlight of what to expect the different days. So Thursday, we have a new event at 7 o'clock, which is a Chick-fil-A Nugget Toss. All of these events are free to the public and they'll be a lot of fun. Friday, we have at 6:30 p.m. a Family Fitness Challenge event for families and groups to participate. At 7:00 p.m., we have the Village Inn Pie Eating Contest. At 9:30 p.m., we will start our movie in the park Friday night, and that will be Hotel Transylvania is the movie this year. Saturday, we begin bright and early with our 5K and 10K races, starting at 7:10 for the 10K and 7:30 a.m. for the 5K. And proceeds, some of the proceeds of this will go to domestic violence awareness and to our West Valley City Victims Advocate Office. And people are also encouraged to bring items that they can use in that office for the various things that they perform. At 10:00 a.m., the parade starts and we are excited to have the parade back this year. It's been five or six years since we had it. A little different route. It will start at City Park, follow 4400 West to 3100 South, and 3100 South up to Centennial Park. We're excited about that. At 12:30, we will start with our skateboard competition in the Skateboard Park at Centennial, and that's always a lot of fun. And also at 12:30, we start our Dutch Oven Cook-Off. And there are three different categories or levels of competition for that. There's a youth competition. There's backyard for the novice. And then it's also a national qualifying event for the International Dutch Oven Society. It's actually an international qualifying event, so that is a sanctioned cook-off for that. Then we have a new event this year that starts at 3 o'clock, which is a great treasure hunt. And this is pirate-themed, very family-oriented. And there will be clues and things set up throughout Centennial Park for families or individuals or friends to participate in. And that will be a lot of fun and there will be prizes and awards given for that as well. At 3:30, the Sam's Club Hot Dog Eating Contest will happen. At 6:30, we will have our West Valley City Police Department Canine Demonstration. And then at 8 o'clock, our West Valley City Fire Department Repelling and Demonstration Event as well. And then, of course, at 10 o'clock will be the wonderful fireworks show. Thank you.
Thank you. West Fest has been a tradition in West Valley for a number of years and it's great to have it on again this year. We encourage all who are here tonight or listening in to come and enjoy whatever part of that you would like to, if not all of it. And so great fun and a great tradition here in West Valley. So that's our opening ceremony. With that then, let's move on to our agenda. Now, let's see. We have special recognitions for scouts, but it doesn't look like there are any here tonight. Don can usually see around the corner as I can. So seeing no one here, no elected officials come to visit, so we'll go to our minutes of June the 4th. A motion on the minutes.
Move for approval of the June 4th minutes?
Second.
Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we are at our public comment period. Let's see. And I do note here, we do have a public input period on application ZSA-12019. This is a final plan approval, Clearstone Estates, Vacating Portia Clearstone Drive, and ordinance 19-17. If you're here to speak on that, just wait it and don't do that during our public comment period. The public comment period is for just everything else. And on those, really, it's open to most anything. Although we could make very brief comments on something that someone brings up in public comment, we cannot have a policy discussion. Because by state law, which is a good law, anything, any policy discussions we have need to take place in a public meeting and be noted. So... And that's good because we want to make sure that the people's work is done where people can see it. And although you may not think that that particular item is important, it is important that we do the business of the people in a public way, that people can weigh in. You'll note our five-minute warning here for those. We have two, four, six people have signed up. That's not the maximum, but at least we know we have that many. So we will begin. Oh, and by the way, since many of you, this may be your first time, it is not a debate, it's not a question and answer period. It's your time. You get to speak. We'll come back and the council may respond briefly or the city manager, they're on our agenda as well. So with that, John S. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. I am here to make comments about the redesign of 41. It's begun. There are several aspects of it that have gotten me a little perturbed. There's nothing I can do about it at this point. First and foremost was the community mailbox. I've spoken about it here with planners, dead-set against it. It's not just about me. It's about my neighbors, one of which is homebound. She lives in Lieber House. That's two doors down, right directly east of me. All three people that live in that home are handicapped. They don't have a way to get to a community mailbox, you know? It's poor people management by the postal service that they can't give their employees the time to get out of a truck and walk a route. That's poor management on their part. I don't like this community mailbox. I know it's done and set in stone at this point. Whatever, I'm going to work around it. What am I supposed to do when I'm 85, still living where I'm at, and I'm stuck at home? And I don't have a way to get to him from a community mailbox. Secondly, something needs to be done with speed enforcement along 41, especially right now with the construction that's going on. It's not during rush hour. You've got individuals that are racing up and down that street just like they used to. As a matter of fact, just this morning, there was a wreck right, I believe it was just east of my residence. And from what the construction workers were telling me, one of their employees had to dodge a big box truck. People are speeding through there. Please do something about it so not just us, the residents, but these contractors don't get hurt. The last item that I want to make a comment on, the contractor who is performing the work, the people doing the job, made a simple request of them, trying not to block. Because most of the time when I'm leaving, my residence, I'm going eastbound. And I asked them, I know that at some point, one of them's going to get blocked. I've got two driveways. And I just simply asked them, try not to block, bolt. Because it's a pain in the neck to go around the block. That light at 4400, it's, there's no sensors. It's a timer thing and it's, whenever it makes up its own mind. They've been accommodating and I do appreciate that of them. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Nitro Richard Nowak.
Hello. Thank you for your time, Mayor. I'm here to address new parking enforcement, a parking agency. So I've noticed there are new cars that don't drive around West Valley. Issue out citations for most of the cars that are expired or parked in the wrong spot. I personally received a ticket for parking on a roadway facing the wrong direction. So I'm trying to dispute this ticket and I was hoping to talk to a live person. I first went through the traffic court in the next building. And years ago, I had an issue and you can actually sit in a cubicle and actually discuss this with a live person, whether it needs to go to a trial or the conditions that this was occurred to try to get it resolved. So with the parking, I came here to the city office and the lady behind the counter said, well, we can't discuss that here. You can appeal it online. So I did make an online appeal and I did receive an email back. And the person on the other end decided that they're going to go ahead and uphold the ticket. And it said, as a parking coordinator, my direction is to limit to examining the facts and applying them to the specific code you've been cited for. So I did send some photographic evidence and describe the conditions. In my particular neighborhood, there are no curbs, no gutters. There's no storm drains or sidewalks. And I completely understand if you're opposite traffic on, I'd say it's like a normal street with all these conditions could be upsetting to traffic patterns or even dangerous. And in particular, our neighborhood I'm living in is undeveloped or not completely developed. So there's easements on either side and they're dirt easements. So my vehicle is on this dirt easement as so we can unload some equipment into the facility that I have on that particular address where it was written. And just two years ago, we spent $12,000 to have cement driveways put into that area so we can wheel carts out to do unloading. And I'm able to actually back into the driveway and turn back around the other direction. So in consequence, I took additional photographs showing the truck in the right direction according to this code, also on the easement. So there's enough room and it's completely off the easement. So the citation that I had received, I went online and he'd actually taken pictures. It was interesting because I was present with the truck. As it was unloaded, that's when he stopped and I didn't notice because there were no lights on the car or other markings besides writing on the door. And in the next frame picture, you can see a Utah Power Company truck pulled up. He stopped, put his little cone out, walked over and asked me about a power meter 300 feet down the driveway. So I said, well, we'll look at it. So I left the truck on the easement. It took us less than five minutes and I came back and he's speeding away. And I thought, oh, that's parking enforcement. And then I noticed, well, here I have a ticket. So I called the phone number and said, well, I would like to talk to somebody. And he said, well, if you don't get anything put into your appeal, you can go to the district attorney. So today I went upstairs and then I talked to a nice gentleman and he said, well, this was created by the city council. And these people are citizen parking enforcement officers, so they're not police officers. So they may have a little, like a cloudy judgment of how this code exactly applies to certain types of road construction. So the way that the roadway is constructed in this neighborhood should be addressed. And I'd like to find out because my next option is actually to file something in district court if I want to talk to a live person. And I believe parking enforcement should be a little easier if there's a dispute that might not agree with exactly how the code or the ordinance is aligned. So if the council has something they can offer me after the meeting or somebody I can talk to, it'd be appreciated. And thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ben Rickett.
Thank you for your time. I am Benjamin Rickett and I'm here for one primary purpose. First of all, I'd like to say that I stand here enraged. And I imagine maybe you all do a very good job of what you do, but in one instance, I have lost respect for each and every one of you. I don't deal well with threats. You guys have threatened to make me homeless and put me on the streets. I'm here for a code enforcement violation. I'd like to ask you how you would feel if I came to your house with the means of the government backing me and I threatened you with $1,500 a day fines that would bankrupt you because your grass is too long, an inch too long. The fine should fit the crime. A parking ticket's $50. That's reasonable. Speeding ticket, $150. A DUI, $1,500, $2,000. I'm getting the equivalent of a DUI a day because my grass is an inch too long. I don't like to be bullied. No one does. I intend to use my energies to get this law changed to something more reasonable. I think I would not be enraged at a $50 a day fine. $1,500 a day enrages me. It does not make me want to cooperate. It makes me want to fight back. I have resolved the issues. She made an error on it. There are actually only two violations. And one of them was because the lawn was a little too long because it rained for five days in a row. And they didn't mow on a mow in the rain. The other one was very valid. The weeds were a little too high in my parking area. So I've resolved it. She's sending me an issue of, you know, compliance. Also, I spoke with this compliance officer and I was hard on her. I wasn't very polite. As I calmed down, I was more so. I told her I was going to drive around. I'm targeted because I'm on 4800 West, a major street. She admitted to that. She said, yes, I drive by there all the time. That's why you're being targeted. Other houses in deeper into neighborhoods are not getting fined. I said to her, I'm going to take pictures of all these other violations right next to me and I'm going to ask them if they've been fined. And I'm going to bring that in here. And what happened? I live in West Valley City and my property's in West Valley City. I got a violation for my own carport a few days after that. And that carport hasn't changed for years. So your government has retaliated against me as well, your city, okay? I'm being targeted. I'm not being paranoid. I have proof of this. So I would simply like to work with you and understand why you feel like you need to bully me, threaten to make me homeless, and treat me in a very demoralizing way. I would like to put this on the agenda. I would like to work with you. I'd like to be very professional. I'd like to learn what you do more. I'd like this to be changed so that other people don't feel the emotional trauma and experience of being bullied like I have. Um, let's see. Yep, I wanted four things. I want this law to be changed to a more reasonable fine. I want an event. Thank you for letting me do that. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you like this. That's very kind. I would like to address retaliation, which I have. This officer has talked to some other officer and they've retaliated. And unfair targeting. People on the main roads get targeted more. And it's not fair that I get targeted more often than my neighbor. It's not fair. And vague notices. My dad got a notice many years ago on his carport and he said repeatedly to me, they shouldn't be vague. They should explain more clearly what's out of compliance, what needs to be changed to get it back into compliance. And very often, people need to meet with these officers or call them, wasting their time to get that kind of clarity. They're not in the reports, okay? So I would like a few of these changes to happen. I don't like feeling angry like this. I don't like to be bullied. And the city should not rule with threats. I don't believe that's fair. It's not the kind of city I want to live in. So if you guys could get back to me, I'd like to talk to someone. My name is Benjamin Rickett. I can give you my information. And I'm sorry, but this has really upset me because I've gotten these fines before. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Barkin.
Hi. I'm really here to support him. I've driven with him along that street, have seen multiple houses, not only with worse yards, but very dry yards with way higher. And it seems to me that it's almost like she's meeting a quota for her route. And she has to do her job, so she's going to target anything she could. And for her to target that particular one when there's much more, there's way worse that I've seen. And we should have brought pictures to show. I would have loved for you guys to see that. But yeah, his frustration has caused him a huge amount of stress. And he has felt targeted and it's not fair. And she's communicated with us and we would like to understand how her route works and how she comes up with the conclusions and her decisions on how to send out a violation to someone. Yet there's multiple houses along the same street, along her route. How she decided to turn, to look at that and target that, we'll never understand it. And when we asked for her route to understand how she comes up with her decision, she simply sent me or gave me a message, a voicemail, saying, we could look that up ourselves. We have no way of knowing how to do that. So I'm just really here to support him and to give my point of view on that. And it is, it's unfair. So that was all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is someone on 1429 East Roosevelt. I apologize. I wasn't able to...
I did actually intend to speak. I thought I was just filling in the agenda. But now that I'm here, I'm the engineer for Covington State at Small Tree Lots, our division. I'm an engineer. I work in many communities, from Summit County to Wasatch County to Alum and here. I just want to tell you that you have the best planning and engineering staff. And three Steves, Steve Astorik, Steve Lehman, and Steve Dale. They've been super, super good to work with and so informative and just fun. Just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you. Okay. Rodrigo Andres or something close to that? 3498 West Lake Road? Anyone else here to speak in our public comment period? Oh, Mr. Martin.
Just a couple of quick things. Beans Councilman Buehler brought up the Lehman Avenue and the food courts. I've mentioned it to a couple of different people. If there'd be any way we could update the electrical system alongside Lehman Avenue there on the south side where the trucks park so they don't have to run generators. Because if they try to run, if they run their generators and we have a movie or we have a concert, it's a battle back and forth. Up on Murray Holiday Road, I was up there to their food trucks one day. And they have all their outlets up on a pole. So they're not down in the water like cars. They're up on the pole. They can be shut off. So people can't pull their motorhomes up there and plug into the power. But if we could get power there so that the food trucks wouldn't have to run their generators or make a requirement of something with their generators. Because I ate off, got food from a food truck up in the Ogden area yesterday and standing right in front of the food truck, you could hardly hear their generator. So they have put some effort into taking care of that. So if we can look at rewiring that and getting the outlets out of the water so that they would last before we remove all of the other construction there. And then also, I want to thank, I think it was Tracy down in Evidence. I've been working with her as far as a handgun goes that I found and turned it into the city last November. And fortunately, we were able to find the original owner of the weapon through tracing it down with the serial number. He didn't replace it, report it as stolen, but she was able to trace it down and find the original owner. So I want to thank her for putting the time and effort into doing that.
Thank you.
Jim Bisok, remember, and I wanted to wait till the end of it. On the code enforcement thing, I've sat in several hearings and stuff. The $1,500 fine, something's wrong. I sat in, homeowners get fined $25 a day unless something has changed. Rentals are $500 a day. So unless something has changed from the last hearings I sat in on, that's what the fines are. I'm sure Mr. Pyle will address this or something. Last week I talked about, I want to clarify, calling code enforcement officers. I believe they should be called an agent and then wearing badges. They're not part of the police department and they're not post-trained at all. There's no need for a badge except for an intimidation factor. I just wanted to clear that up because there seemed to be a little confusion. And then you guys talked about a little bit about the abatement process in the study meeting. I still, still suggest that before the abatement is done, there should be proof of service. Right now, there's no proof of service. If you put it in the mail, it's presumed or assumed by the city, I would say presumed, but assumed by the city that they got the notice. And there's people that say they haven't gotten those. Before you go and take somebody's stuff, you should make sure that they were notified. Even, you know, like I said, the last resort, the certified, even if it's refused, there's people resisting. Well, they can refuse it. That's proof of service because the post office puts all the information. That's proof of service. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we'll close the public comment portion. Come back. Mr. Powell, do you have any comments?
Thanks, sir. Yeah, I was kind of debating, but yeah, I think so. I think I'll take a couple of moments. I was actually pondering before the beginning of the meeting. We're in the time of spring and as we've seen over the last few weeks, and we see this every year, you have sort of an upswing and an upsurge in numbers of code enforcement cases. And that's usual to post-winter. Sometimes that results from the fact that there were cases that needed resolution from the previous fall. That might include landscaping, sorts of improvements that weren't required until the new year. Or it could quite often also just include cases where people's homes didn't get caught up on their landscaping in the rainy spring weather or for whatever reason. There's lots of reasons, but we see that upsurge every spring. And we have seen a lot of commentary in the council meeting here over the past couple of months about that subject. So I was actually sitting here at the beginning of the meeting, kind of typing up to myself some notes from just a general commentary standpoint that sort of explained the necessity and the process of our code enforcement process. And I aim in words creating those notes more for the general audience that might be sitting here tonight or might be up watching the channel or might pick this up on the internet later on. So with the council's indulgence, I'm going to go over those notes and try to be succinct, but also really, again, try to explain why we go through all this pain and grief in our code enforcement process in the first place. So the first point is this. Our process is necessary. Our process is necessary. And I know you, as a council, have heard this many times. Some in the audience have, probably very few people out there that might be listening have. Back in two thousand and seven, when we first started, not code enforcement, but completely revamping our code enforcement process, and this goes to the necessary point. We surveyed the city for five specific and common code enforcement complaints. That could be anything from inoperable vehicles, you know, your transmission's out on the front lawn, you haven't watered your lawn, or you've let your grass grow too long. It could be boxes and stuff on the lawn generally throughout the property or outside storage in our carport. So we narrowed that to five offenses. We surveyed the city at that time. And we came up with a rate at that point of forty-six percent of our single-family homes in this city violated one or more of those efforts. It became clear to the council at the time that action was gonna have to be taken before that situation finally tipped to the point where you had a majority of the single-family homes in this city who were in violation of our code enforcement rate, and you might literally get to the point where you no longer had a majority support for a clean city from a code enforcement standpoint. So at that time, the council directed us to revamp the system, which we did. We had huge success with that system. And to this day, two thousand and nineteen, so that's twelve years later, we now vary around a fifteen percent violation rate. That's a lower violation rate than we see in other cities. On average, on average, we see other cities at about a twenty percent violation rate. And we have achieved that with a specific effort that is necessary. But the second point I kind of was putting in my mind was, our process is fair. We have four, a minimum of four steps that happen in any particular case before the threat or the possibility of fines is really even going to happen. The first of those steps is a courtesy notice in which you have basically ten days or a few days or even a little more than ten days, depending on how the officer is running that particular case, to take care of the violation with no further ramification or problem. We see seventy percent of our cases resolved with that courtesy notice at the first level. By the time we get to the fourth level in court, we have achieved, or to court, we've achieved over a ninety percent compliance rate without any fines, without any further actions of that. This is done, by the way, at great expense and effort and time to the city in terms of staff time and effort and operation, which becomes later, important later in these comments. By the time a case would go to court, even then, when a case goes to court, and if it can get resolved in court, the vast majority of the time, the vast majority of those fines that would have been accrued or the threat of those fines accrued are eliminated. And at that point, if somebody comes in and resolves the case on their property, they usually, and I'm not saying in every case, but usually will be fined something that basically equates to the actual cost of running that court action. And some usually, some sort of token fine that is more equivalent to a traffic violation, maybe a little more severe than a speeding ticket or around the level of a speeding ticket. But we're usually talking a couple of hundred dollars, maybe a little bit more. And it can be more in fines depending on the case, but that's the usual situation. So to that point, our process is fair. It's more than fair. Can it be improved? It can always be improved. We're always looking for improvements to that process, and we will continue to look at those in the future. The last comment that I had made in my notes here, which probably doesn't complete the whole thing, but it was as far as I got before we got to this point, is sometimes people will come and they think or assume that this is a money-making program for the city or there's some sort of quota system, as was mentioned earlier tonight, or in some way, there's some sort of incentive for the city to do this other than just playing clean yards and properties. And there is not. Our operation to run this code enforcement effort runs on something of the order of a million dollars a year. By the time you add up the costs of the staff, the equipment, the facilities, the administration, all of that, plus add in to any sort of legal advice or participation that we need. So we're around a million dollars in cost a year. Any of those fines from a total accrual standpoint that come in equal in the tens of thousands of dollars at most. So this is clearly not a money-making or incentivized situation for the city to go through. Again, there are all kinds of other discussions I could go on about in terms of how clear are the notices, what are the specificity of the code violations, all that sort of thing. But the basic point is this. There's plenty of opportunity in the process to cooperate and take care and resolve the situation in any given single-family home or case, or for that matter, commercial or multifamily properties as well, without accruing any fines. So again, just wanted to make that commentary for those who may not have ever heard that process explained before or anybody who's listening in tonight. And Mayor, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you to the council then, for any comments?
Councilman Christiansen. Just want to make a quick thank you to Mr. Markham. Thank you for turning in the gun and also for following up and making sure that we did find the original owner. Thank you.
Okay. Now there are, as I went through these, some of these are items that we have discussed before, but specifically I thought might be appropriate to follow up on is just a follow-up specifically on this one on the fifteen hundred dollar fine. It seemed like there's probably more information that we could use. Maybe you could just bring that to us next week in study meeting.
Okay, sure, Mayor.
And I don't know so much it's a policy discussion as it is just to find out some more information.
What I'll do in that particular case is I'll just give you specifics on the case and let you know what the fifteen hundred dollars was or how it was not accrued.
It's helpful to get the full story on that. And then the food truck electrical hookups, I don't know if we've talked about that before. That's kind of a new one for me. We may have talked about it before, but maybe just put that on and see if we- And what we're discussing here is, because we can't discuss policy if we're going to change policy, but we can talk about just, you know, we want to, say we want to talk about things. And so these are items that we're considering putting on our agenda for next week or doing some sort of follow-up on them. Is that, is that one, you're okay with that one?
In study session.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, not, excuse me, no, not here in our next week's council meeting, but rather in our study session where we can be, you know, gather a little bit more info. Then with that, any others? Okay. Then with that, we'll go on to item seven on our agenda. And this will be application ZSA dash one twenty nineteen and ordinance nineteen dash seven filed by Ken Milne. This is final plat approval for Clearstone Estates, Phase Two Law Two Ten amended vacating a portion of Clearstone Drive. This particular issue is where we had approved a subdivision, and of course, as things get built out, not everything is built at the same time. Subsequently, there was some changes in our zoning. Another subdivision was built, and as it turns out, the lineup of roads doesn't always work out when you have different types of zoning and size of lots, et cetera. And so looking at this, our engineers have proposed to make some changes there. And so this will modify what was going to be a connecting road and turn that into, I think was not, we're not gonna make it a connecting road anymore. It'll end there and just be a curve. But in order to do that properly, a couple of things happen. There's a little extra property and property that's not in the right place. So this process we're going through here now will rectify those. That's the proposal. And there will be some additional work done there to handle where property is no longer needed for a road and then making that all come together. Now, without going into a great deal of detail, that's the issue that is before us. So is there anyone here, while I'll open up the public comment period, is there anyone here to address this specific issue, either for or against? By state law, we are required to have this public hearing. No one is required to speak. And it looks like there's no one that's going to speak. With that, then, I will close the public comment portion. We'll bring it back to the council. One other comment, since there's some new people here tonight. If you note that we don't ask really a lot of questions, go into a lot of detail on a number of these issues, is because this is the second time we have had it on our agenda. So last week, on many of these issues, it was on our study agenda where we asked questions, reviewed it, had a lot more information given to us. So we are doing our due diligence, but we wait a week, and then we typically then will have here where we take official action. And it has to be noted that we will take official action here. That's on our agenda. With that introduction then to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance nineteen dash seventeen.
Property force, any further comments? Okay. With that, then, again, by state law, we will do a roll call vote to our city recorder, who will take that vote.
Councilman Fittis Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, item eight, A, application SMI dash four twenty nineteen filed by Satar Tabris. This is-
It's easy to say his name when you gotta print it out.
And I probably pronounced it wrong, but I do my best. This is for final plat approval of Covington Estates subdivision at forty sixteen South Sixtieth West. This is a piece of property where I believe there are two homes there, but this is going to be changed and will be made into three parcels. One will be a flag lot going down along the side of the canal to access the ground, and it is large enough and within our current code code to be able to do this. And so this will be subdivided to allow three homes on that parcel. That's the introduction to it. If there's, I'll turn it to the council for any additional comments or any motions.
I would move for approval of application SMI four two thousand and nineteen.
Second property force, any further comments?
I do have a comment, Mayor. Often on these subdivisions, we have, well, we have decided as a council to have all of the subdivisions come before us, but the reality is that many of these subdivisions include this one. If they have checked all the boxes and complied with the law, we, our vote is more or less a formality. We don't have a legal basis to deny it anyway.
Okay, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Fittis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we're going to deal with, excuse me. Allergies took my voice earlier this year completely, and it's started up again. So I hope I'll be able to talk over the next few days. We're going to consider application SMI five two thousand and nineteen filed by the Department of Transportation, final plat approval at the Anna Caroline subdivision at twenty-four hundred South Fifty-seven Hundred West. This is a piece of ground that UDOT owns, and they're going to use a portion of that for some of their storage and work. But there's some other property that extends south of that that they want to have separate for other uses in the future. So this piece of property is being subdivided, and as well, they'll be dedicating a portion of roadway. Right now, it's just a piece of ground, but it will connect up to a roadway, plant roadway in that area just west of Fifty-six Hundred West. That is the issue before us. To the council.
I would move to approve application SMI five two thousand and nineteen.
Second. Property force, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fittis Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That completes our agenda for our regular city council meeting. Unless anyone on the council has any further comments, we'll finish our work with a motion.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We are officially adjourned.